Good morning, everyone. I often get asked if you weren't Chief Executive of Belfast City Council, what job would you like to have? And I have to say, I would really like Stephen Watson's job. You know, he gets to fly around the world with all those famous sporting stars, particularly the rugby team, I have to say. So that is my absolute dream job. But I'd like to thank Rosam, and I'd also like to thank the members of the Women in Business Board here this morning for inviting me here. I'm really delighted to be the keynote speaker. Now, I have to say, I didn't realise when I won that award that part of the deal was that you were expected to speak at this conference this morning. So my first lesson to all of you is be careful what you wish for. So I was also asked to bring along another speaker with me this morning, one that I thought would inspire you. So I brought with me Libby Jackson, who is from Herbert Smith Freehills. And the reason why I brought her was because I shared a platform with her. So this has become a bit of a habit, Libby, I think, isn't it? Shared a platform with her in London. And she really enthuses energy and passion for what she does. And that's obviously a real lesson for me and the job that I do as well. But what I'm going to talk to you about before you hear from Libby today is I'm just going to tell you my story, words and all, and hopefully you'll get some insight to how I've approached the various leadership roles that I've had, also the challenges that I faced and the lessons that I've learned along the way. And I hope you'll get a few snippets of things that will really resonate with you and where you are on your own career paths. So a question I often ask myself is, who am I? Well, if you've just heard, Chief Executive of Belfast City Council for nearly three years now, and really I have to say what a rollercoaster that has been. My office is just here, right on the left-hand side of this picture, just slightly out of screenshot. And I have to say, I do have an absolutely fabulous office, the best address, I think, in Belfast City Hall BT1. You couldn't wish for more. But one of the biggest challenges I faced in taking up the role of Chief Executive was really the whole breadth of what the role entails. You've just heard about the number of staff that I have, and they range, you know, from park wardens to planners to lawyers to accountants, et cetera. And I have a budget of about 200 million, which primarily comes from many of you good business people in this room, well, those of you that pay your business rates anyway. And that's where the income into council comes from. And of course, I have the very, very unique feature in that in my role, I'm accountable to the 60 electorate representatives that make up Belfast City Council that come from six different political parties, not all of whom, I have to say, have the same ideas of what our priorities are. But you'll get more of that later. So what do I do? Well, you'll all know what councils do normally. They keep the places clean, they provide the parks, the leisure centres, the community centres, they regulate new developments, new businesses, buildings, et cetera. But I think that my council has actually really gone the extra mile. And the last few years, we have actually been proactively investing in the city. We've been rolling out over 400 million pounds of capital programmes throughout Belfast. And those include, for example, building six new leisure centres across Belfast, the new waterfront convention centre that we opened this time last year. If you were listening to the news yesterday, you will have heard about our new Giants Park, an eco business park along with recreation on our old landfill site, and a new small business incubation space at the old Mackie site in West Belfast. And that's just to name a few of the things that we have been doing. So my job is really all about making Belfast a much more successful place. And wow, what a job that is. And I want Belfast to be absolutely globally competitive, but I also want it to be a really great place for the people who live there. And the council is really the only body that represents the voice of the people of Belfast. And my role really, since taking up the post, has been to create that 20-year strategy that you've just heard about, the Belfast Agenda, and putting us up there as one of the best places in the world to live in, to work in, to visit, to study in, and to invest in. And that's why I've led the development of this Belfast Agenda, which has just been out for consultation, sets out a really ambitious plan for the city with very real targets, some of which you'll see here on the screen behind me. And I have been focusing, since I've taken up the post, on building relationships, particularly with the private sector, many of whom are represented here today. And this strategy for me will only be delivered not by Belfast City Council, but by all of the key players that make up our city. So firstly, though, I want to take you way back into my world, and some of you will have heard a little bit about this before if you were at the Women in Business Awards, back to my school days and my childhood. So I was a child of the 60s, and I grew up in a very average house in South East Belfast, just above Forest Side, or for those of you who are my age, that was Super Mac way back then. And I had one brother and parents who were fairly strict and quite religious. Hope none of my relatives are in the room and are going to report back to them, actually. And unlike many of the parents today, including me sometimes, my parents, whilst they were incredibly supportive and loving, they didn't really have a preconceived plan for me. So there's no real pressure from above coming from them, except perhaps to conform to their way of life. And whilst life was good, I can recall from a very, very young age thinking, there must really be something more. You know, and I have this vivid recollection of being frustrated by the routine of, which was very much part of my existence at that time. And I started to develop some sort of a drive for finding that something more, even though at that time I wasn't quite sure what that was. Was it more excitement? Was it more experiences? Or was it more making a contribution to society? And I couldn't quite put my finger on it back then. So I went originally to a standard neighbourhood primary school, and then my parents moved me to a prep school in South Belfast, which was all girls. Obviously, they didn't think I was going to pass my 11+ at the time, so it was a bit of an insurance policy for that. And there it was, then, part of my exposure to something more, not just an insight into the wide and varied backgrounds of those girls and their parents, but also the teaching ethos in that school wasn't just about gaining qualifications, it was about really widening your horizons. So I did well at my exams when I put my mind to it, but I soon became much more interested in boys, in makeup, in fashion and in fun, and I wanted to be one of the cool ones. And there I am, right in the middle of that photograph. Obviously, smiling was not cool in those days at all. My reports said I was a bit erratic, and that's probably true. And I remember my chemistry teacher telling me and everyone else in the school at Assembly that I was the laziest girl that she'd ever met. Imagine that. Now, luckily, I'm doing a speech for my old girls' association next Friday night, and she's going to be one of the teachers at that event. So I'll have a chance to get my own back. But one fun I was having as well, and of course, for my poor parents, I was a real rebel. You know, I was running out with crimped hair, dark black eyeliner, and skirts which I'd be absolutely horrified for my daughters to be wearing. And looking back, I guess what I was trying to do was find that something more, and I developed a really fierce sense of determination, which at the time was absolutely misdirected. So for those of you at the Women in Business Awards, you'll remember that I said that my grandmother really had a significant impact on how I thought and how I think, and also my grandfather. And looking back, I can see that they were actually my first mentors. Every Friday after school, I would go and visit them, and I would call into the fish and chip shop on my way and buy a very unhealthy carry-out for us all to eat. But my grandma always encouraged me to take opportunities that came my way, to try new things, and also to believe in myself. I did well enough at O and A levels, for those days anyway, there were no A stars, so thank goodness. But I was not really sure what I wanted to do after I left school at that stage. I was in two minds, should I stay at home, should I go away to university? But by that stage, I had fallen in love with a big rugby player from a neighbouring boys' school. So I plumped to stay at home, and I started a degree in environmental health then at Jordanstown. And it was really during these years that my drive to succeed came into its own. And I think that was exaggerated by a trauma I experienced when that lovely rugby player boyfriend of seven years died at the age of 23. And I was absolutely devastated, as you can imagine. But some inner strength inside me eventually kicked in, and it brought into very real focus for me the fact that my future was really down to me, no one else. And I could sink or I could swim, and I had to swim. So that determination won out, and I focused on studying and surprised myself, and I think everyone else, including my lecturers, when I came out with a first-class honours degree. So my university experience showed me that beneath that determination, there was a strong force that would not allow me to let myself down or anyone else that I cared about down. So I pushed myself hard, even sat up all night if I had to. But resilience was something that I developed during that time and is a really significant attribute for my current job, as you can imagine. And boy, did that event give me stacks of resilience. So there I was in June 1988, looking for a job, and lo and behold, I landed one in Belfast City Council and still here to this day. Back then, I thought I wouldn't stay in one job for my whole career, I didn't even know if I'd stay in one country for my whole career. And I started off then as an environmental health officer, out inspecting restaurants, workplaces across Belfast to make sure they complied with safety, health and environmental legislation, et cetera. And back then, there were only three females out of about 40 environmental health officers in the council. Of course, my colleagues wanted to test out whether I had got what it actually takes to be an EHO or environmental health officer. So they kindly sent me off on these little missions to build my character. First of all, they sent me down to the abattoir where I had to cut into bits of animals to test for diseases. And again, it was a very male-dominated environment, and they liked to play little tricks on me. So they would put lots of unmentionable pieces of animals in my welly boats every morning to surprise me and welcome me when I came in, which wasn't very nice. So I also had to do things like investigate fatal accidents, for example, which sometimes involve young children, which could be quite emotional. However, no day was the same. There was no routine, thankfully. And I was building up that experience, which demonstrated that I could handle many different situations. I also got to see every single corner of this city, meet people from all backgrounds, and witness really stark levels of inequalities in our city. I even had to clean out some dirty houses which belonged to very vulnerable people, like this one. And so along with a few flea bites, I got a really close-up insight into the social and economic pressures that many people in the city face. And this is something I would have been oblivious to when growing up in that little bubble in South Belfast. And this, in my view, is absolutely essential grounding for the job I do today, and made me really reassess my values and develop a passion for finding really innovative ways to address that deprivation and support those vulnerable people. And often in senior roles, we ignore the inequalities that exist right underneath our noses. And I was, and I'm still determined, that this will not be the case in the future. So after a couple of years then, I got my first promotion to Senior Environmental Health Officer, but I faced the joys of a potential industrial tribunal, a case based on discrimination taken out by some of those men who I'd worked with and weren't successful in the job. They weren't happy that this girl that they trained had been appointed over them. They also made my first experience of management really quite difficult in those days, and they even had me questioning whether I was good enough for that promotion. But again, then that inner drive inside me drove me to prove myself and really strengthened my determination. I just worked even harder, I was mature, I was on top of absolutely everything, and I listened to my grandmother's voice in my head, kept telling me, you can do it. And in the end, once I convinced myself that I could, things became a lot, lot easier. From there, I moved through many different jobs, always trying out something new and working my way up through the ranks. And I wasn't always successful in every job, but I just picked myself back up and got on with it. And I did get a bit stuck at one stage in one job, so at that stage, I decided to sign up for an MBA at Queen's University. And I tell you this for a reason, because when I arrived in the Peter Froggett Building, and I'm sure many of you have been in it, on the first day, and everyone started to introduce themselves, my self-doubt levels just soared. There were accountants, there were bankers, there were professors, there were successful business people, and I was the only public sector person on that course. And I felt much more than just a bit inadequate, so I just worked my socks off. Not so that I did better than them, but actually because I was terrified of appearing to be stupid. So I woke up at the end of that two-year period, which was quite an endurance test, actually, with two awards for the best student and the best dissertation. And I don't tell you that to brag about it, but rather to explain that these achievements, for me, were actually very important in building my levels of confidence and also in proactively training myself to believe in my own ability. By this stage in life, I had a husband, there he is, John, and I had three children, Rebecca, Natalie and Stuart, a blonde, a redhead and a brunette, don't ask too many questions. And they have put up with me a lot over the years, but especially in this role. And as a female leader, I think the art of work-life balance, balancing our careers and our home life, really needs careful planning, and it needs real prioritisation and a strong support system. And I was really lucky to have that strong support system. But often my house looked a bit like this. And we, you think, as women, have sometimes an unwillingness to ask for help because we don't want to seem incapable or incompetent. And in the past, I would ring right at the back of that queue when it came to asking for help. But actually navigating through life takes a whole village. And the good thing is that people actually like helping others, and it feels good and it creates those connections, and it shows that we all have vulnerabilities. In fact, I think this is even more important to recognise in my current role, and the further you go up in an organisation, because it's much easier to build really strong trusting relationships with the people who work with you and for you if you show that you're valuing their work by asking them to help you out and showing them that you need them. So don't be afraid to do that and ask for help. And I went back to work full-time after Rebecca was 11 weeks old, and I even did an interview for a promotion when she was three weeks old. Looking back now, I think I was completely mad, but that's how it was. And I know that you heard Women in Business have just launched this programme to assist women back to work, and I think that's something that would be incredibly worthwhile, because as managers, we don't give enough attention to it. What we're focused on, I think, is about looking at the practicalities of what that's going to do to workloads, et cetera. And we don't really think about the significant emotional challenges that women are facing when they go back into the workplace. I know my brain turned to absolute jelly when I was off looking after my children, and I also was convinced that the temp that came in to take up my job was doing a better job than I was doing, and they wouldn't actually want me back into the workplace at all. But each return to work got a bit easier, except for the fact that Stuart, I can nearly say the name of my son, Stuart David Jack Wiley, my youngest, decided that he wouldn't drink from a bottle when I went back to work. So no matter what we tried, so the nursery had to keep phoning me at work and asking me to go up and give him his lunch at lunchtime for about two months after I went back to work. So you can imagine how challenging that was. But you know, I do think it's hard to find a working mother who doesn't really struggle with that guilt. We all do, I was no different. And sometimes I felt I was letting everyone down, I was letting my children down, my husband down, my employer down. And I was always late for that pick-up at the nursery and got fined an absolute fortune. But looking back now, the reality was actually quite different. Perhaps I missed out on a few lovely moments with my children, but I don't think they've suffered at all. In fact, I think they're very, very independent people. And of course, my advice to my daughters has always been that positive attitude is critical to success and happiness, and go after the opportunities that come your way and throw yourself into new experiences. No, you've heard that before. Yes, I have become my grandmother. But they have taken me at my word, as you can see, although Natalie has taken this to an absolute extreme. So mind you, Stuart, who is a grunting 17-year-old, is still a work in progress, so you can see a theme with him. But perhaps that's due to the fact that I let him down very badly one Christmas for his first nativity play. The night before his play, I asked him, what part do you have in the Christmas play? He was in P1 and he said, Toby. And I thought, hmm, Christmas nativity play, Toby, I can't be much, you know, and I forgot all about it until the next day, when I turned up late, as usual, crept into the backseat, lifted the programme off the seat and read the title, which was Toby's Drum. And I went, he's the lead part, oh! So obviously, I hadn't practised any of his lines with him, and so maybe the grunting is my payback for that. But of course, those of you, her parents, we all learn to juggle, and we become good at it, actually. And in fact, I think I'm addicted to the adrenaline that that juggling does, and again, it beats that routine. And it stands us in really good stead when we have to face any sort of crisis in a workplace, which for me happens every other day, if not every day. And because of this experience from both work and home, I've taught myself to keep incredibly calm when in a crisis, even this crisis, when the flag protesters broke into City Hall. You'll remember this scene and this wee lady shouting, no, surrender, through the window. I was right there, just where this photograph was taken from, behind that door, and I was organising the riot squad to come to City Hall that day. I've also had the job of coordinating many responses to emergencies across Northern Ireland, just a little extra duty I agreed to take on on behalf of all the other councils, with that's included dealing with flooding, water shortages, calling in helicopters during the big snowfall a few years ago to drop feed stuff to animals in the Glands of Antrim. So my judgement and quick decision-making were thoroughly tested, obviously, during those experiences. But I have needed help and support along the way, from my grandmother to my first boss, who encouraged me to think outside the box, to today, a well-regarded business leader. And I would say, working with a mentor is an absolutely essential asset to any senior job. When I was appointed to my first senior post in council, which was Head of Urban Development, I had no experience of what I was responsible for whatsoever, the capital programme, procurement, urban development. And my mentor really helped me get through that whole process and look at things with a fresh perspective. He also supported me to understand myself better and to learn to be comfortable with making a few mistakes. And I think that role was undoubtedly the best grounding I could have had for this Chief Executive role, because I just had to jump straight into everything. And I didn't go to our automatic response, which is to focus on the things we're good at, because I didn't know any of it and I wasn't good at any of it. But that meant I had to stay really strategic and become an expert in training my brain to stay positive and to think bigger, to remain focused and be relaxed about not knowing everything, and that I would absolutely make mistakes along the way. I would naturally have been a worrier. I would go home some nights previously and, you know, think to myself, what did I say that to that person for? They will hate me for the rest of their lives. But I don't do that anymore, I've trained myself not to. In the beginning, I really had to discipline myself to do it, but now it just comes naturally. So you can do this. Now, taking time to reflect on your own achievements, I think, is also important, increasing your levels of self-belief. So when things got tough, I'd say things to myself like, well, I did that job well, even though I had no experience of it, or I did run that whole emergency response, for example. So my advice to you is find out what will work for you, it's not the same for everybody. And to do that, you need to understand yourself and you need to understand your personality and also your behaviour styles. And I regularly seek feedback through appraisals, including 360-degree appraisals. I think assessments like Marsh Briggs are also really good at helping you to understand yourself. I'm an ENTP, if anybody has done that, then you know what I'm talking about. And what that means is that when under pressure, I revert to trying to sort everything out there and then. But what I should really do is go home, sleep on it and come in fresh in the morning and sort it out then. So I've had to train myself to overcome that automatic reaction of mine. And also, if you do suffer from a lack of self-belief, find out where that's coming from and what situations you're in whenever it happens, and practise doing some of those things a bit differently. One of the things I used to be very guilty of doing when I was in a board room full of men, I would sugarcoat what I wanted to say. I'd come up with a really bright idea and I thought it was pretty damn good, but I would say something like, well, I know that's maybe a very good way of doing things, but maybe if we look at it another way, then we could do this. And what tended to happen was that everyone would just look at me and then get over with the rest of the conversation of the meeting, as if it's Edna fine, or maybe I had a few horns in my head. And then 20 minutes later, a male colleague would come out with the same statement, right? But he would say it really directly, and the whole room would declare it a fantastic idea. So to my absolute horror, so I've practised that in different environments, and often in meetings initially, that weren't really that important. So moving on then to my role as CEO, it was really important for me and the organisation that I embraced my own leadership style, not someone else's style, not trying to emulate my predecessor or be something that I'm not, because very quickly I would run out of steam and run out of energy in a job that really is a 14-hour-a-day job. So my natural style is to share my vision, create enthusiasm amongst my team, my elected members and staff, and try to bring people with me. And I do expect people to work hard to achieve that vision and to make that expectation really clear, but I don't want to be checking up on them all the time. And I don't want to blame them if things go wrong at all. But I do need a culture where they will alert me and feel comfortable to alert me when things do go wrong, because I can't have any surprises in my organisation, because we're constantly under the media spotlight. And there's nothing worse than getting a call from Nolan on a Monday morning telling me that we have run well over budget on some capital bill programme, or we've completely messed up all our new bin rounds, which clearly did happen. So my role as CEO, as I've said, is a very political one. But I went into the job with my eyes wide open. One of the biggest challenges is that it's a very, very vulnerable place to be, can be very lonely at times. I don't feel like that every day because I enjoy my job, but often the things go wrong because I feel like that, because ultimately, everything stops with me and rests on my shoulders. So my levels of resilience that I've built up over the years are hugely important. But before I took this job, I thought long and hard about what would keep me awake at night, and the answer was the politics going wrong. So when I came into the post, it wasn't that long after the flags dispute, and I'll never forget the impact that that had on our economy in the city. So I've worked really hard to ensure that we don't get ourselves into that position again, and to make sure that we achieve a resolution to some of these issues that are still around with our politicians, away from the public meetings in private and out of the media spotlight. So as long as Stephen doesn't tell any of his media colleagues that that's what happens, and they don't go fishing around for too much. But talking of the media, I do, you know, have to be very careful, this is a real challenge of this role, about how I'm seen in public. And it's important that I'm perceived as being politically neutral. As soon as I would appear to serve one party over another party, then I would have my head taken off. So I spent a lot of time building good relations with my politicians, but it's always a balancing act. One of my fellow chief executives in England describes it as skating on ice, that's what it sometimes can feel like. So talking of relationships, having a really high-performing team beneath you, no matter what level you're at in an organisation's critical, and developing that trust and loyalty with my team has really always been something very important to me and very evident in how I work. And that comes into its own when you have to make really tough decisions, which I have obviously had to do. Trying to managing my reputation, and it can be very difficult, particularly against the backdrop of social media. I've had to de-tag myself from all my friends' photographs that they post on Facebook. And anyone here who reads the Belfast Telegraph will be aware of Cycle Gate, played out on the front of the papers and debated on the Nolan Show a few weeks ago. And in many ways, it felt like a bit of an out-of-body experience for me, because I really was used as a political football. And yet, I was in the centre of a raging debate on sexism. I couldn't say anything publicly, because if I did, I might be seen to be aligned to one party or the other. So I just had to sit and write it out, excuse the pun. So I've shared with you some of the trials, but there've been so many exciting things that I've had to do in this job. I had the pleasure of taking the Queen around St George's Market when she came to Belfast, and I can confirm that she does actually carry money. She did produce a 10-point note and bought a teetotal at one of the market stalls. I don't think she's ever used that teetotal, mind you. And then there's been lots of famous people that I've met, and I've chosen a few of the rugby stars here. So of course, there's Brian O'Driscoll, and my favourite, which is Dan Carter, obviously from New Zealand. And of course, we all like our very own cheeky chappy Jimmy Nesbitt as well. But I obviously did not impress Jeremy Paxman. But I obviously did not impress Jeremy Paxman. Look at that face. He looks positively bored with the tales I'm giving him about how great Belfast is. And mind you, I wasn't too impressed with him either because he slagged off our Christmas market in the media. So a question I'm always asked is, is it harder being a woman in your role? Well, I think it's more about how I perceive things. I felt I've had to work harder to prove myself. But really remarkably, since I've been CEO, I haven't really had any issues, comments or jibes, except Cycle Gate and of course, the odd blonde joke like this one. And, you know, every day when I go into unfamiliar meetings, sometimes or with a male colleague, sometimes they assume that the male colleague is actually the chief executive and start speaking to him. So, but I have to say, my daughters appear much more relaxed about their roles in the world. They don't see it as a competition with men at all, just with other people. And you know, that's the way it absolutely should be. So thankfully, there are now more women at the top of corporate organisations in government and also in politics, but it's clearly still a work in progress. And I think it's up to all of us to make sure that we support other women to achieve in these roles. A few last pieces of advice to leave you with. Even if a public role like mine or getting to the top of an organisation isn't really for you, I would advise yourself, you just stretch yourself in some way every single day. Try something new. Fear is not always a bad thing. And really find what helps you to get your balance, your perspective and your equilibrium and do those things regularly. For me, it's about walking my lovely dog on the beaches or shopping spree with my daughters. This really replenishes my energy, which is really important in the job that I have and gives me a sense of perspective. So for me, having a successful career, this just sums up what I've been talking about, requires you to have a really clear vision, stick to it, have the right attitude and the courage to take bold decisions, have that energy and passion for your job. And that energy and passion has grown as I have grown into my various jobs. Be really self-aware and make sure you're resilient as you move up through an organisation. Have good support networks and really have good relationships that you can rely on when the going gets tough. Always continue your professional, your personal development. And plain old hard work is always good, but tops for me is integrity. That includes being really authentic, sticking to your values and being certain about your sense of conviction. And I knew I was living these things when my twenty-one-year-old daughter Natalie told me after a fourteen-hour-a-day that, she just said, mommy, you just love this job and you really have passionate. And that was a lovely thing to hear from that daughter that I thought, you know, I hadn't spent enough time with in the early days. And when do you know you've made it? When you have a bus named after you. Just threw that one in because we find this on a street in Milan somewhere. So where next? Well, I feel like I've only started in this job. I want to deliver so much more under the vision that I have shown you earlier on. I'm determined to continue to rebuild Belfast and all those important business relationships. Also have plans to achieve some really tangible things for the city, such as becoming European capital of culture in twenty twenty-three, the same year we all hope Ireland will win the Rugby World Cup and host the Rugby World Cup. And also to build a second large visitor attraction of scale in the heart of the city centre. And that's just to name but a few. And you may have already heard yesterday the news that we're opening a new exhibition in City Hall itself on the fifteenth of May. So you're all very welcome to come and visit. You now know where my office is. So you can call in and say hello to me too, if you can get past my gatekeeper. So good luck with that one. But obviously, what I have talked about today a lot is wanting to change things in the city for the better, but also to change ourselves to become more successful people. So I want to leave you with the words of Barack Obama. Couldn't find a good quote from Donald Trump, so I had to go back to Barack Obama. And this is it. Change, change will not come if we wait for some other person or other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change we seek. Thank you very much.